Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 9th regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. If you could join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. We're going to mix the order up really briefly, just for an important change. I would like to welcome Nina Zorowski to the Board of Selectmen as one of student reps from Shepherd Hill for the first time ever. We now have representation from up at Bay Path as well as the Hill. So Nina, welcome. But if you'd like to let the folks at home know a little bit about yourself.
Well, hello, everybody, and thank you for having me. So I'm a Charlton resident. I'm also a senior at Shepherd Hill this year, and I'm part of the National Honor Society and a varsity volleyball player on the Shepherd Hill team. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Nina. We look forward to serving with you for the entire year.
Thank you.
All right, folks, moving back up to the agenda and warrant approvals as needed. We're looking at minutes of the special meeting with FinCom from the 20th. Is my not-so-subtle way of saying I'm looking for a motion?
I would make a motion we accept those minutes of that meeting as noted.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Second, Abashya, in discussion. Okay. All those in favor?
I'm standing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, and David's abstaining, so 3-0-1. Next up, the meetings of the regular meeting of October 26th.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second?
Second.
It's gonna be a long night.
No, 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 we got.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Seconding the motion is better than seconding the emotion.
Vow point. Just don't.
I thread their backs.
Don't even.
Fine.
That is unanimous. We are down to community relations. Select person Zorowski, if you would, please.
Announcements. DPW leaf dump is open. Hundredth Flynn Road, Charlton, Mass. Charlton sleeve waste dump area is open every Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. starting October 30th to 11/20, 2021. Only yard waste, including leaves, grass clippings, shrubs, tree trimmings, less than three inches in diameter, less than three feet long, and non-wood organic garden waste permitted. The town hall will be closed on Thursday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day and Thursday, November 25th. That's for the Thanksgiving. Special town meeting Monday, November 15th, 7:00 p.m., Charlton Middle School. And the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold the Tax Classification Public Hearing in the Selectment's Meeting Room. Meeting Room is 1 at 37 Main Street in Charlton. And also via Zoom. The credentials are right on the website, the passcode, phone access, and the Zoom webinar HTTP website. On Tuesday, November 23, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of the hearing is to determine whether different or uniform rates of taxation will be applied to the various classification of real property. The Board of Assessors will be available at the hearing to answer any questions that you may have. Input from the taxpayers will also be welcome at the hearing. And last but not least, Household Hazardous Waste and Electronics Collection is Saturday, December 4th between 9:00 and 1:00 p.m. And that's Casella Waste Service Facility at 165 Bearfoot Road in Southbridge, Mass. See Board of Health for the free Household Waste Day voucher. It's worth $30. To get all that information, you can just go on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Abashya. Appreciate it. Any other announcements from the Board? Hearing none. Let's turn to open forum. Stefan, come on up. We're excited.
Good evening. Put on my library hat today as chairperson of the Charlton Public Libraries Board of Trustees. We had some library news. We had an event about a week and a half ago celebrating the outgoing librarian Cheryl Hanson onto her retirement. And two days later, we welcomed our new library director, and I wanted to have an opportunity to introduce her to you as select board members. And this is Karen Wall, who started about a week and two days ago. So I'm going to let her have a chance to speak, and I will be quiet.
How long is that going to last?
Two minutes.
Thanks, Stefan. As he said, my name is Karen Wall. I've been a librarian since 2003 and a director since 2013. And I am very excited to be here in Charlton. I was a colleague of Cheryl's, so I'm very thrilled to be back in the fold of the central Mass library system. And I'm very excited about bringing some new programs and ideas and offerings to the town of Charlton, working with the schools and other community organizations as well as the town. So thank you so much. And we're having a meet and greet. I'm going to give a plug. We're gonna.
Who's gonna give the plug? You could go ahead and give the plug.
Oh.
See, less than two minutes.
I'll.
Exactly. I knew it.
We're having a meet and greet on, just for members of the public as well, on Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00. And I would love people to show up with their ideas for programs and offerings they'd like to see at the library. Thanks so much. Do you have any questions for me?
Welcome to Charlton.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Charlton.
You said something about your new programs. Can you elaborate a little bit?
Sure. Well, I'm looking for ideas on bringing new programs to Charlton. Right now, we're gonna sort of resurrect the, because of COVID, of course, it kind of upended a lot of the programming in every library. So right now, we're just working to bring things back to whatever normal is. And I'm working right now with another member of the staff. We're, today, we participated with other library programming people, just sort of brainstorming ideas for when the first of the year rolls around. So, you know, financial literacy. Here are some ideas. Financial literacy. You know, everyone makes their New Year's resolutions, right? I'm going to save money and get healthy. So things like that. Gardening, you know, things of that nature. But really, I would, I encourage people to show up on Saturday with their ideas, and no idea is too crazy. We'll consider everything, so.
And that's Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00?
Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 in the entry of the library downstairs.
Right. And to entice people, there will be light refreshments seasonal as well. So please come, and we do like ideas any time of the year, not just Saturday.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Karen, obviously welcome. I think you'll find the community very welcoming and very warm to your ideas, so I'm sure you're going to have a very successful tenure, ladies.
Thank you so much. We, I've only been a week, and so far, every person that's come in my door has raved about the library and the staff and how friendly they are and how much they love the library. So I'm just over the moon to be here.
That's great.
Your library is well-loved.
Yeah. With that approach, I'm sure you'll do the great things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stefan.
Thank you.
All right. Folks, anything else for open forum? John, you good? No, I didn't know if you were here. Never mind. All right, we are hopping down into appointments and resignations. First up, another per diem dispatcher, Mr. Golos.
So Police Chief Dowd is asking the Board to appoint Stephanie Devorekis as per diem dispatcher. She's currently employed by the Town of Oxford. I'd recommend the Board make the appointment. And just for information, the Board had previously appointed Jose Aponte as a per diem dispatcher at your meeting on October 20th, 2021, but he has since declined the appointment.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Singer. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Steve. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. That's unanimous. Next up, the appointment for the Cultural Council.
Attached is a talent bank form from Gabriela Grundauski seeking to be appointed to the Cultural Council. The Cultural Council has been in need of members for quite a while. The expiration date for this appointment will be June 30th, 2025. I'd recommend the Board make the appointment.
Thoughts from the Board? Do I have a second?
I second.
Second, Abashya, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All right. Posed. That's unanimous. Thank you, folks. Last up for appointments is the Glen Echo Lake Drawdown.
Attached is a request from the Conservation Commission asking the Board to appoint Nicholas Dillage to assist with drawdown of Glen Echo Lake. I'd recommend the Board make the appointment as requested.
Pleasure for the Board.
Mr. Chair, so move.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Thanks, Abashya. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. I'm going to call that unanimous. Next up, and exactly on time, we are at a poll hearing for Trolley Crossing Road. So bear with me while I scroll down to read the open hearing. Thank you. So this is a public hearing notice. The Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 9th at 6:45 p.m. The Selectment's Meeting Room, Room 1, 37 Main Street, Charlton, and via Zoom. To act on requests from Verizon New England, Inc. to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including necessary anchors, guys, and other sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by petitioners along and across the following public way, Trolley Crossing Road, place one solely-owned pole numbered T14-5-1 on the north side of Trolley Crossing Road at a point approximately 280 feet easterly from the center line of each Putnam Road extension. The Roski asking permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connection with such poles and buildings as each of said petitions may desire for distributing purposes. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear in the date and time specified or via Zoom noted above or submit current concerns in writing. Our public hearing is officially open. Do I have any concerns from the audience? Anyone online?
We haven't represented for Verizon.
Oh, hey, Paul. Thanks for coming. Any questions from the Board for Paul? Hearing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing first.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That's unanimous. Public hearing is closed. What is the Board's pleasures on approving the petition?
So move.
Do I have a second? Second from Steve. Discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That's unanimous. Paul, thanks for dialing in. We appreciate it. You're good. All right, next up, we are looking at new business. Mr. Golos, what we have going on? Anything?
Nothing for new business.
Oh, you always make me happy when you say that. Next up, we have some administrative work we have to do quickly on reprecincting, which I'll never say correctly. Mr. Golos, if you just want to give us the elevator speech on this.
At the last meeting, you had approved the reprecincting act as it was presented, but upon reviewing the legal boundary description, there was an error found in Precinct 1 in 3. So we need to revote the precincting act with the corrections.
And again, for those at home and those in the audience, really, nothing changed. Karen did some more investigative work, and there was a small error that we just need to formally approve, just to make it official. So I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Abashya, do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. That is unanimous. We are back to being official on the reprecincting. Next up, fees by the Board of Selectmen. This was a request by select person Singer. Andrew, if you want to start, then I'm going to turn it over to David.
Yeah, so just briefly attached, I've included the current fee structure that we have, minutes from the meeting where the fees were last approved. And I believe that, I'm not sure if it's attached, but I privately previously emailed the Board just showing revenue fees, or revenue from each one of the fees and the comparative communities. So just for discussion, so just turning it over to you guys to see what you would, how you'd like to proceed.
Thank you, Andrew. Select person Singer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have, I assume this is the same, I see one difference on this handout, so I'm going to remove one. I'm going to request, I'll make it as a motion, to make six adjustments to the fee schedule. These are fees that are under our control for Selectmen, and that is, there was a conversation last time. The suggestion was that, and people know I don't care what other towns do, right? A lot was best for Charlton. And so that Charlton's competitive and has, I think, fair fees. In most cases, we were, well, in a handful, we were on par, or a few less, but in many we were higher. So I'm going to read this, Mr. Chair, as a motion, so that we don't have to beat around a lot. The motion is to change chimney fireplaces from $200 to $100. And I will provide the notes, if you want, Andrew, to you later, or Mary, for the record. And also to split garage barns and storage sheds into garages and barns at the current 250, but making it slash storage sheds, so it reads 250 slash 100. So garages and barns would remain 250, but a shed in your backyard would drop to only $100. Decks from 200 to 100. Signs from 75 to 50. Reinspections lowering from 75 to 50. All alcohol club lowering from 1,000 to 750.
Do I have a second for discussion?
I have a question. So you said that all alcohol, that goes for all the premises, the on-premises of the premises, all of them?
This is for all alcohol club. So this is only for clubs.
Oh, just for the clubs.
And there's only one in town.
You said 750.
Correct. We currently charge 1,000. I'm proposing we lower it to 750. If you want to look at comparisons, we are actually higher area, other area towns are only about a, where am I? 750 and 675. So only Auburn is higher. So I think it would also get us in line. And these are designed, I think, the fee reductions I made the motion for. I don't know if we had a second.
No, I was going to say, so we have a motion on the floor. Before we have further discussion, I'd like to at least have a second or.
I would have, I would say, I would put a second on David's motion.
Thank you. So.
I like that.
So.
We're trying to, yes, thank you. So the idea behind this was to try and alleviate the burden. We can always raise them again, right? They're under our authority, but to alleviate some of the burden financially on the businesses that are in town, and the residents and contractors who do business in town, who have come through a financially difficult time through this pandemic. In the grand scheme of things, if you look at the fee schedule, it doesn't cost the town a lot of money. We lose 300 here, we lose a little bit there. There's no big hit to the town, but to one business, that 250, or that 300, you know, helps them pay other bills or employee salaries. So I think every little bit we can do to try and alleviate the burden on our local businesses and residents is a good thing.
Further discussion from the Board? More questions for select person Singer? Nina, is he? Do you guys get? All right, not hearing any further discussion. Anyone from the audience want anything on this one? No, we're good. All right, let's move on this one. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. That is unanimous. Thank you, select person Singer.
Thank you.
David, if you could send that over to Andrew and or Mary. Mary, sorry to have you. You have typed this up.
I just gave it to Andrew. I crossed that out because I didn't realize he did not say it was per year. I thought it was per event. So I crossed that out.
Okay. Thanks.
Charlton may have just set a new precedent for being one of the first towns in the area to lower its fees for our residents and businesses.
All right, continuing on our old business, we are reviewing the alternate draft of ARPA, also known as the American Rescue Plan Act.
All right.
Andrew, nice job on this. If you want to walk us through kind of what you did for the people at home, too.
Yeah, so I'll just kind of try to go briefly through it. So with the last plan that I had provided, it was a little bit more comprehensive and ate up a bigger amount of the budget. And I kind of had put a little caveat at the bottom that we were still looking to see what our revenue replacement figure was, assuming that, because we've had relatively strong growth in town, that we wouldn't qualify for much. But thankfully, the way that the formula worked out, almost 3.4, well over 3.4 million of the $4 million that we are being granted is actually, we can qualify for revenue replacement, which essentially just opens up the ability for the use of the funds. You know, it just basically says that we can kind of be a little less strict with the uses. So I kind of tried to pull back some of the proposed uses and maybe come back to really a true Phase 1. Essentially, the way it would break down is with the sewer, first fund the engineering study that was requested to be done, the police-fire radio system, keep that same amount that was proposed, invest $100,000 to continue toward the mitigation efforts for COVID-19, continue with the feasibility study from the council on aging. I added in to invest in a digital records archival storage to try to, you know, make it a little bit easier to access public records, you know, remotely and for continuity of government in case we ever do lose our permanent records that are piled up in the basement.
Are we using MicroFiche? I'm just curious.
Well, we haven't selected a vendor yet, so we're.
No, no, I'm sorry. I meant stuff like onsite. Is it all paper, or do we actually have, like, that old-fashioned MicroFiche?
Oh, I don't think we have anything in MicroFiche. We have.
That's a big win for us.
We've been trying to kind of scan in as much as we can, but I'm sure there's a lot more than we could, but it'd be nice to go to a fully digital system.
For so many reasons.
For so many reasons. Continue with the waterline connection. In place of the EDC, or the Economic Development Director position that I had in the last time, I'd replace that with $200,000 to go toward business and nonprofit assistance grants, essentially putting that under the guise of the EDC and allowing them to award grants up to $20,000 for applicants. And then $300,000 we'd put toward revenue, or excise revenue replacement, essentially looking at kind of the trends with new vehicles. We may not hit the benchmark that we figured that we may, because really, there's not a lot of new vehicles being sold. So figure it'd be a good use of that true revenue replacement to make sure that we do hit that benchmark. And finally, just appropriating $50,000 toward any administrative costs, including a single audit or anything else that may come up that be qualified as administrative to take care of this grant. Not saying that we're funding anybody's salary, but other unknown costs that could go toward the use of these funds. So essentially, that would leave about $2.1 million of funds that could generally be used as direct allocations from the Board. And as long as they're under that revenue replacement category, the Board of Selectmen could appropriate those at any time within the allocation period. So it would essentially kind of give the Board the ability to move on any project it felt was in the most, was in the best interest of the town at that given moment without having to wait till the next special town meeting.
So we have until, what was it, December 2024 to obligate those funds?
Yes.
But this is to start the projects, or to just, you know, obligate them to?
We have to have the projects completed by December of 2026. The funds need to be obligated for their use by December 2024.
And I'd also add, as a reminder, we requested that we hold a public hearing, I believe, on the 23rd on this to get public feedback. So anything that we do tonight, it's going to be more of a, is Andrew, we like this plan, or no, we don't, thinking about the public hearing. So again, further thoughts from the Board on Andrew's proposal before I give my two cents?
Yeah, as far as the EDC part, the 200,000, the EDC is, is, they can be obligated to spend that money on their own or with or without Selectmen approval?
It's all within the way that it's structured. I mean, if the Select Board would like to be the final approval for any award, that's fine, and made the EDC make recommendations. It's really within the jurisdiction of the Board. If they want to just, you know, have the trust in the EDC that they're going to do the best work with it than they can, then that's your call. It's really kind of up to the town as to how it sees its best use of those funds.
And it says business and non-business assistance grants, so.
That was the thought, is that you may have some nonprofits in town that didn't qualify for other economic assistance programs that the town may feel it's of its best interest to fund.
It's not just, forgive me, it's not just for new, but it could be for existing business and easy assistance.
Correct.
So I like that. I'd like to see it come back to the Board.
Okay.
Yeah, me too. Definitely come back to the Board.
Steve, thoughts from you on that? Coming back to the Board versus EDC?
Well, EDC was strongly directed.
Correct. Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
He was on the two of things. It's 200,000.
Just for a review, but yes, just as we know it, yeah.
So I'm hearing, conceptually, we like the idea. It's just a matter of saying that the EDC will basically look at ideas and grants, et cetera, or proposals, give it back to the Board with their recommendation, but it's going to be our final say.
And is there going to be uniform standard application that goes with it, or?
I actually included the application form proposed in the packet, so that way, kind of gave you some outline as to what would be asked. And then what I did was kind of do it out to say that we do this in kind of four phases, do this on almost four phases, so that way you gave a deadline for people to apply and then a timeline for the EDC to vote, and then we can add into when the, you know, it'd be kind of like the next meeting the Board of Selectmen considers. So that way, it's not like every single meeting, we're going to have more grants to have to take on, or it's first come, first served, kind of set benchmarks and say, you want to get in Phase 1 here, and then Phase 2. And we could, you know, we could have all the money spent by Phase 2, but decide to appropriate more from the amount of funds if it's really a program that is successful.
No, I really like that. This is a very good idea.
And so do I. And what I like about this is it gives, the EDC is working really hard, because I attend some of those meetings, and for them to be able to have some little cash in their pocket to say, hey, this is what we can do, this is what we can offer, this is what, this is a great idea. I like it a lot.
It's a very inviting gesture.
It is.
To, you know, from outside. Yeah, I really like it.
Any further questions around the overall plan? All right, hearing none. Andrew, nice job. Looks like we're going to promote this for the public hearing on the 23rd. Again, we welcome everyone to come, give us your opinion. Again, as a reminder, the ARPA funds will be distributed by the Board of Selectmen, not town meeting. So here's your chance, as well as in the future, to come, let us know what you think. So Andrew, very nice job on that.
Thank you.
Next up, special town meeting, finalizing our motions. I think we did most of them, but I know there's at least one outstanding, and there might be some other stuff we need to talk around. So Andrew.
Yep, so the board is scheduled to finalize special town meeting motions tonight, it's been sent to attorneys for review, all their changes have been incorporated into the final document. Given the board approves of all, you know, no further changes, we will set it to the printers for tomorrow. So I just recommend the board make the motion to approve.
The only thing I would ask from my colleagues is that we purposely didn't take a vote on Article 12 at the time, around the zoning change, because we were waiting on the planning board. Am I just saying, is the planning board voted to endorse it, John, is that true? Thank you, John, by the way, we have a planning board member, Smith, in the audience, so thank you. And so they vote to endorse, so we, historically, we've gone both ways on these, meaning that sometimes we, we make a motion one, one way or another, but it is the will of the board to see what we want to do, again, this is a property owner petition for a zone change, so I defer to the board's wishes, how they want to handle it.
My preference is to not support, oppose, or endorse private citizens or others' articles.
Additional thoughts from the board? Basically, they, basically translate for those at home, select person Singer, basically, because it's a, it's, I want.
Not sponsored by the town.
Yeah, exactly, that, that, that the board would take a, or that Board of Selectmen would take a neutral position on it, and then basically don't say anything. Thoughts, anybody else?
I'm, I'm abstaining.
Thank you. No, Steve, I appreciate that. Vasha?
I agree with you, no, I agree.
All right, so it sounds like.
We have a motion?
Well, we, well, it sounds like we have a, so, okay.
Not included.
All right, let's actually break these up one at a time, so it sounds like, we don't want to say you even need a motion on like Article 12, because what I'm hearing is that at least two members do not want to.
So we just.
Take a motion on it, right? But then what I, then I would, what I would entertain then is to finalize the existing motions within the board.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, oh, discussion?
So that's finalizing neutral.
It's, it's basically saying that for Articles 1 through 11, or however it is, anything that we, that we made our recommendation on prior to, we're gonna just continue as is, because there were no additional changes based upon any new information, and we're taking a stance of neutrality, if you will, on Article 12, and we're just not taking any position as a board. Individual members obviously may have a different feeling on town meeting floor. So I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Steve, you want to stand, or do you want to vote?
Stand.
Okay, cool, all right, we have 301, thank you very much for that. We don't have any committee reports, no policies, Andrew, you want to talk about anything around our goals and objectives, or are you pretty good on that?
I guess update you guys on a few things, so I did get the proposed, we, we have added Brookfield Road and Stafford and Dressard Hill and Saundersdale Road to the scope for the safety audits that are being conducted, just provided an update in my TA report as far as where that stands, but it is, the Stafford Street one is moving along. I know after this, we'll still have some remaining grant funding available that we could, may either expand the scope to additional intersections or dive deeper into solutions that are proposed, so I figure we'll wait to see what comes up from the Stafford Street at Center Depot Road, and then kind of decide how to, how to proceed.
I know there's been some website improvements.
Yeah, there's been, we've done a lot of, say, time and energy into kind of trying to make the website more user-friendly, a little bit better graphics and stuff to make things easier to find, so. Go on, check it out, see if there's anything else that you think needs to be changed, and we'll try to, try to get right on that, and then permitting process that is still moving along, we act, we've streamlined the internal procedures that now all department, departments will take in payments directly, there's no more than march around Town Hall in order to just apply for a permit. So now, you know, whether or not you're doing it in person or online, you know, the online permit, we did have to kind of delay a little bit just because of some staff turnover in the building commissioner's office, and just working through the bugs, but, you know, we're still looking right around the beginning of December for the public facing, and, you know, that should be a big step moving forward.
Thanks, Andrew, any questions for Andrew around that? Hearing none, moving on to the next one, Izzy, how we doing up at the?
We, so, beginning with school committee news and school happenings. On Tuesday, October 26th, Commissioner Riley, under the authority of the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, issued an extension of the DESE mask requirement. In brief, the commissioner has extended the mask requirement through at least January 15th, 2022. Currently, if a school building demonstrates a vaccination rate of 80% or more of all students and staffs, then vaccinated individuals in that school would no longer be subject to the state mask requirement. Our records indicate that the current vaccination rate for Bay Path students and staff is approximately 57%, that means masks, masks up at Bay Path. The school is requiring all students, as well as masks, to bring their IDs with them at all times. There'll be random checks throughout the day. If school, if kids fail to present their identification, their names will be sent down to the dean's office to ensure no outside students are in the building. Moving on to sports recaps, Bay Path varsity football played Blackstone Millville on Saturday and won, so good job, boys. On the contrary, girls volleyball, as well as boys and girls soccer teams, all made it to the MIAA states tournament, however, all teams sadly lost in the first round. We are still proud of our Minutemen and all that they accomplished during their seasons. As fall sports come to a close, winter sports are beginning. Boys and girls basketball signups are now open, and tryouts begin after Thanksgiving break. The first day of tryouts for boys is on Monday, Monday, November 29th. Freshmen and sophomore boys try out from 4:15 to 6:00 p.m. Junior and senior boys go from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Tryouts will be held in the Bay Path gym, and masks are required. The girls' tryouts will take place from November 29th through December 1st in the gym, from 2:30 to 4:15. All players must have a cleared, up-to-date physical signed off by the nurse prior to tryouts, as well as all paperwork turned in either before or of the day of tryouts. Indoor track starts the Wednesday after Thanksgiving from 2:30 to 4:15 every day. Track starts after Bay Path cuts, and the team roster closes, sorry, basketball cuts. Team roster closes on December 10th. The Bay Path bowling team is back, practices start today and continue each Tuesday. Matches are on Fridays starting December 3rd. Bay Path is also partnering with Shepherd Hill and their co-op wrestling team, signups closed yesterday. They are, they are also partnering with Worcester Tech in a co-op ice hockey program that will start the Monday after Thanksgiving. NHS has organized a food drive for the month of November, so bring in your cans. They are planning to hold an induction ceremony in December. Applications are now being accepted for anyone interested in having a house built in any of the 10 towns in our district for the 2022, 2023 year. The deadline for applications is January 3rd at 2:30 p.m. Interested applicants should call Peggy Corsi or email her for an application and guidelines. Visit the Bay Path website if you wish to see photos of past house, house projects. We have a full-fledged restaurant at Bay Path, the Hilltop Restaurant continues to do carryout and curbside ordering, you can place orders on the Bay Path website, and hours are from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., Tuesday through Friday, thank you.
Excellent update, Izzy, questions from the board for Izzy?
No.
Nothing? Very well done.
Thank you.
Nina, do you have anything tonight? I know you, that.
I do, but my, the newsletter hasn't came out, so it's not as descriptive as Izzy's, and we also don't have.
It's not a competition.
No, I know, but we also don't.
Stephen and I have competitions, you guys.
But we also just don't.
David and I don't have competition, we totally get along every single time.
I do have some events, we, we don't have a lot of events going on, but I do just have some things going on. So some school events, November 20th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. is the 29th Annual Festival of Crafts at Shepherd Hill. And then November 23rd is Powder Puff Football Game, which will take place at Shepherd Hill. The time is still to be determined, but it should be a fun night, so everyone should come. And that's gonna be freshmen and juniors versus sophomores and seniors, so very competitive. And then November 24th, we have our Shepherd Hill pep rally, and then that's also an early release day. And also later that day, Tantasco will be hosting the annual Thanksgiving football game at 5:30. And just some miscellaneous information, so November 1st to the 19th, National Honor Society is collecting donations for, for the Thanksgiving food drive, and any donations of non-perishables or canned goods will be highly appreciated. November 5th concluded the first term at Shepherd Hill, and November 12th, report cards will be posted on the portal for all students and parents to observe. And November 11th, just as a reminder, it is Veterans Day, so there will be no school. And then November 28th through December 14th, National Honor Society will begin the toy drive, and we will start collecting donations, and again, any donations that will be collected are greatly appreciated. And just a few reminders, that winter sport registration just closed yesterday, so all winter sport tryouts will start Monday, November 29th, and the details about who's playing when and the tryouts will come out in the next newsletter. And also just a reminder for any students that are taking AP exams, that AP exams need to be paid prior to January 21st, 2022, and all checks are made out to S H R, HS. And that's all.
Thanks, Nina, questions for Nina?
Ah, she looks, she's got.
There was something about your report card, I don't know.
Yeah, I was making the notes. I will provide the shelter after that.
It's okay, it's always, so.
You know, and, and just as a comment, in the town, in the small town of Charlton, you know, we're 14,000 people, we have two wonderful school systems, and, and we're blessed with two, two select board people that, students that are, that are able to join us, I think that's just awesome. There are so many other towns that don't have that, and we are so blessed with that. Different, different avenues of direction on what they're doing, and, yeah.
No, right, Steve, no, you're right on.
No.
I'm serious, no, 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 it's awesome, I love it, and it's, it's absolutely not a competition thing, you.
Oh, no, we're sure.
I've got, I got a feeling by watching your, your guys' eye contact, you guys are way over that anyway, we're not gonna have a problem, but.
Well, in the future, we'll have to just like take bets, like every week is different, who's faster, who's longer.
Oh, I'm longer.
Oh, yeah.
I'm longer. She's like a fatality to me.
It's a competition, who, who has more notes, no, just kidding.
No, the end result would be who's better prop handed, but we'll get to that, we've got a whole season.
I think that was a great idea, well, to bring that Bay Path student, so I think that was a really, really good idea.
I thank the board for supporting it, so, yeah, I like it.
That was my, that was my comment, you're welcome, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Future generations.
All right, thanks, folks, up next, Andrew, anything else you want to talk around the TA report? I know that you touched on some of it.
Uh, no, I think I'm gonna win the competition for shortest report tonight.
Well done.
See, everyone taking the over-under, I mean.
Any other business for members of the board that was not posted? Hearing none, all right, next to me, announcements, I know it's a surprise to a lot of people, but we have a special town meeting next week. Pre-town meeting is November 15th, 6:00 p.m., Charlton Middle School, basically, that's where the Board of Selectmen are gonna get together, divvy up the motions, make sure there's no last second business that we have to handle, but it is an open meeting, anyone who wants to come. The special town meeting itself is also on Monday, November 15th, at 7:00 p.m. Again, as a reminder, Charlton Middle School, please come, that's all I can say at this point, really, I mean, I'll get off my soapbox, I promise you, and it's just, there are a lot of votes in this that are town-altering, for good or bad, we need you to come and voice your opinion, so, anyway, I'll, I'll leave it as that. BOs regular meeting, our next one is November 23rd at 6:30 p.m. here, we actually have a couple things, we have the tax classification, as well as the ARPA funds for public hearing, so looking forward to those. Any other comments from the board about anything like town meeting, or anything else for that matter?
Hi.
Which, by the way, we actually have a town meeting on Monday, I, I don't know if people knew that.
I don't.
My, my only comment will be, please come, like Selectman Borowski said, we're counting on you, and there's a lot of important things coming through. We do have a daycare, we have the service available for, what was the ages, Andrew?
Kindergarten through sixth grade.
Kindergarten to sixth grade, and if you come to vote and your child is over that age, I personally will take care of that child, so please come, please.
And again, thank you to, I believe it's the National Honor Society at Shepherd Hill doing that for us, so. Thank you and your partners for doing that, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steve and David, anything else?
Yeah, I would just, there, there was a little, as far as town meeting and, and wearing masks or not, I just want to make sure everyone's aware, it's encouraged, but not mandatory. So we don't want to turn people from not going to vote because they're afraid of the mask mandate or anything like that, it's encouraged, but it's not mandatory, and there are masks available at the desk when you arrive.
I got nothing.
You got nothing, all right, we don't have executive session, and it's 6:45, I mean, it's, I mean, 7:15, damn it, I was so close.
Yeah.
No, there was an insider joke there, I'm not gonna bother, exactly. So, unless there's other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous, thank you much, everyone, we'll see you Monday, thanks, Jeff, thanks, Drew. Karen, thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it.